And so we'll call the meeting to order.
Mayor Rashad Arizmendi.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Denise Del Mar.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Here.
And Councilmember John Capocha.
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And if we can all stand, we'll have Mayor Pro Tem Denise Del Mar lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everybody. I'd be remiss if we didn't mention the awful and horrific crime that took place in Las Vegas. Actually, as I was leaving work and while I was a little late, we found out that one of our employee's wife was killed at the concert and left three children and her husband. So it touches everybody. And the one thing that we can dwell on the violence, but also just to hear the heroic efforts. This employee of ours actually did CPR and his wife found out, you know, she died and left her to go and help other people that needed the help. And he told us that that was repeated time and time again that evening as strangers were helping strangers. And I just want to give thanks to all of our first responders and the people out there that are loving and caring. And let's take that with us instead of the violence. And if we could just say a moment of silence for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Del Mar. We'll move to the next item on the agenda for the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous and we have approved the agenda. We'll move on to mayor and city council reports. Who'd like to start?
I have nothing to report. Nothing.
Nothing here.
Just a brief report. I did get to go to the Chamber of Commerce Monthly Mixer last Thursday. It was pretty well attended and I saw Chief Ortiz there and lots of other folks that wanted to kind of get involved with the chamber. I just want to encourage anybody who's watching that these are advertised pretty regularly on Facebook. And I think it's the last Thursday of every month at Kensington. It's a delightful room with delightful refreshments and I strongly suggest anyone with an interest show up. That's my report.
Thank you. Congratulations to Taylors. They celebrated their 51 years of service with a customer appreciation on Saturday. And I hope to deliver a customer or a certificate of recognition to them soon. And I didn't do it fast enough. So I just had to take a picture with a hot dog in my hand with Mr. Taylor. And Kiwanis had a seemed to be a successful pancake fundraiser on Saturday also. And I also just want to take a moment before I came into our meeting today and earlier today. I saw this Facebook post on our Sierra Madre website. And for those of you that may not be members or didn't have an opportunity to see this, I definitely thought it was worth reading and I'll just read through it. This is from the Lessie family, who I don't know, hopefully someone knows. Our family wishes to give our heartfelt thanks to Sierra Madre Police Dispatcher Kenner and Officer Barry. Our daughter was running for her life at the Route 91 concert in Las Vegas last night. When she couldn't reach mom and dad by phone, she called S N P D to ask for an officer to drop by our house to let us know that she was okay. Dispatcher Kenner stayed on the phone with her and helped her get to a safe place. Officer Barry came to our home to gently alert us to events unfolding. Both officers went well above and beyond regular service. We are forever grateful for the kindness and extraordinary level of service given to our family last night. So please extend our thank yous. You know, sometimes you don't know how incidents like that touch us at home. But as Mayor Pro Tem Del Mar shared, and just to see something like that, we are just extremely thankful that we have caring people in our department. And our hearts do go out to all those that were lost and any of those, whether it be in town or anywhere else that you may know, family members and friends that may have been touched by that incident. So, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item on public comment. For those items that are not on the agenda, if anyone would like to speak on any item, please feel free to come up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak and just say your name and where you're from and come on up.
Thank you, council. I'm Darlene Papa and I'm here representing Lifeline for Pets. We're a no-kill pet rescue. And this is Seema Listman. She's one of our wonderful fosters. And we brought to show you tonight two adorable tabbies that desperately need a home. And they are Parker and Charlotte. And I'm holding Charlotte and that's Parker. And we'll just do a quick turnaround so the audience can see as well. They're twins. They are just the perfect two tabbies. Tabbies have great personalities and these two are wonderful. They're very sweet, loving, playful. They're only about five months old and they have to be adopted together because they're quite bonded. So they desperately need a home and we hope that someone either in the audience or the council or someone out there in TV land will see them and want to adopt them. We are lifelineforpets.org. You can find them on our website at the Young Cats page. And we hope that you do do that and look for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My dogs would eat them, otherwise I would consider taking them. Okay, would anyone else like to comment in the public comment section on items not on the agenda? If you'd like to, please move forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our action items. And we have our consent calendar and Madam City Manager.
Mayor.
Did I say madam? Sorry, mister.
Mayor, there's two items on consent this evening. Item A, consideration of Resolution 1748, determining the limits of the fiscal year 2017-2018 Street Improvement Project. And item B, consideration of cancellation of October 10, 2017 city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I'll bring that back to council, see if we have any questions on any of those two items. Okay, seeing none.
I forgot to say we'll be right out in the hall if anyone wants to visit us. We'll just be there for a few minutes.
Thank you. So would anyone like to provide public comment on the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none. Now I'll bring that back for either discussion or a motion to city council.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. And we'll move on to discussion. And it looks like our first item is Director Public Works, Chris Simino. Is it? Yes, great. Is this the right one? Oh, we're out of order. My apologies, I see a 1A, sorry. Sorry, Director. That was just like an exercise to come up and down the aisle. My apologies. Okay, so our first item is consideration of Resolution 17-47. And it looks like we have Assistant City Clerk, Madam Aguilar.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. At the last meeting, the city staff presented three applications for consideration of appointment to the planning commission. And also, at that meeting, the city council appointed Thomas Denison to serve a partial term. Council directed staff to return to a future meeting with a resolution that would amend procedures for the appointment to boards and commissions and also to review the remaining applications for filling the remaining position on the planning commission. The current procedure with Resolution 1282 is to accept three applications for one vacancy, four applications for two vacancies, and six applications for three or more vacancies. City staff is recommending that we amend the procedures for appointing boards and commissions so that three applications are received regardless of the number of vacancies. Council may choose to adopt Resolution 1747 that's before you, amending the procedures to allow three applications for the city council's review regardless of the number of vacancies. Or city council may choose to direct staff to return and solicit additional applications pursuant to Resolution 1282. And city council may choose to fill the vacancy based on the two remaining applications. The two remaining applicants are Mr. Joseph Catalano and Mr. Valiusso. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So let's first ask if there are any questions of the city council.
I do have one. So what prompted the change?
So Resolution 1282, which was passed five years ago, stipulates that there are restrictions on the number of applications that we receive. And at the time that it was passed, there was a lot of logic behind that. But unfortunately, inadvertently caused some delays in filling vacancies on the different commissions. And that has caused either sometimes lack of quorums and we've got to reschedule items. Sometimes permits or projects are delayed because we don't have a quorum. And so this would address those issues.
And how long have these vacancies been in existence?
One of the applications that we received for this vacancy is about four months old.
Okay. No other questions, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Let's open this for, well, and let me ask a clarifying question. So we are asking for two items to be approved here. One is the actual appointment of the planning commissioner. And then the second would be the resolution, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So now it's clarified. Let's bring this to public comment and see if there is anyone here for public comment. And/or, do we have both of our applicants here? No.
I don't see either applicant here, but both were aware of tonight's meeting.
Okay, and both of them did come to our last week's meeting.
Both were here at the last.
Great. Okay, so bringing it back to council, we can handle, would you like to handle the procedure first and we can have discussion on that item? Okay, so let's go ahead and look at Resolution 12-82 and the amendment, proposed amended procedures and see if there's any discussion that we'd like to have on that.
First, I move to approve.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I think it's good the way it's written. Soon as we get through, regardless of the number of openings, we deal with it and we can, you know, fill one or two or three, you know.
Agreed.
And given some of the vacancies that we had for long periods of time, so. Okay, given that, if we had a first and a second.
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that was, well, we have.
We have one abstention.
One abstention, yes. So four approved. Well, abstention, is that what would be considered? Someone not in present? Okay.
Motion.
City council member Goss first and then council member Capocha second and then four approved. Okay, all right. So I had reached out to Mayor Pro Tem Del Mar to let her know of her surprise if she hadn't read her agenda yet. But now we are leaving it to you to carry forward the appointment of the next planning commissioner. At our last meeting, last Tuesday, we had a two to two vote. And I understand I could have made the decision, but I decided to.
I decided not to do that. Well, this one's actually fairly easy for me because I have known Joseph Catalano for a while and worked with him on the general plan and came to depend on him greatly for a lot of our, when we were working on the general plan. I also know that he does, he does know our historical sites and that's where he is. But I also think he can be open-minded and I think he can be fair. And he would add an element of the planning commission that we don't currently have. So my recommendation would be Joseph Catalano.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to use that as your first motion?
Done.
Okay, that's a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
I could just make a quick comment.
Sure.
My colleague is out of the room. He and I both were slightly favored Mr. Useley over Mr. Catalano. But I'm perfectly good with Joe. He's a good guy. I think the commission will be fine with him. And I just wanted to be public about, I thought since there's three of us, four of us here, I think I'll throw my vote in with the lot just to make it plain to everyone that this is a good pick. But I just wanted to be real clear about where I was last week.
And I apologize, I always jump out of order on that. I want to make sure that we have an opportunity for public comment before we do a final vote. Okay, seeing none. So with that, we had a first and a second and I'll call for the vote.
Plan order?
Councilmember Harabedian.
We've appointed you to the planning commission.
Excellent.
So we have a first and a second for the applicant, Joseph Catalano.
Great.
Okay.
And please, Val Useley, is that how you pronounce it, to apply again? Because there's always those openings. We always need the good people.
Definitely.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And seeing that that is unanimous, that motion carries. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, so our next item on discussion is the first reading introduction of ordinance 1393. And I see Management Analyst Carlson at the podium.
Hi, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council read by title only for first reading, waiving further reading, and introduce ordinance 1393 approving the joint powers agreement for the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy, often referred to as LACE, and authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program in the city of Sierra Madre. You may recall at your July 11th meeting, the interim executive director from LACE provided a PowerPoint presentation on the program, which was followed by a brief discussion. Staff is now prepared to recommend the introduction and approval of ordinance 1393. Community choice aggregation programs have been authorized in California through legislation in 2002 and then refined in 2011. The program allows for a JPA to purchase wholesale energy, including renewable energy, in the open market at a negotiated rate which is still distributed and managed by an established utility company. The intention of these programs is to provide lower energy bills to businesses, residents, and institutions, as well as providing the customers with options to increase the content of renewables when they're making their decisions. There are currently five such models in California and five more models are being considered, including LACE, which could become the largest. The concept of the Los Angeles Countywide LACE program included an early feasibility study referred to as the business plan. The peer-reviewed plan resulted in rate reductions and options that I shall put on the screen here for a moment. You could see on the green, on the left-hand side are the current Edison rates from the feasibility study or the business plan. The standard rate, there would be approximately a 5% reduction by using the LACE. This includes 28% renewables, which is the state standard. Residents, businesses, and institutions would also have a chance of bumping up to 50% renewable rates in which they would still save approximately 4% from the Edison option on this side. Again, it's still below what they're currently paying. 50% is still lower than the current 28% from Edison. And finally, our residents, businesses would have the option to go 100% renewable. They would be paying a little bit more, I think it's 6% more than what they're currently paying with Edison, but they'd still save considerable amount of money from what Edison is currently offering. And staff has also concluded that there are really no risk to our residents who can opt out of this program and return to Southern California Edison for a nominal one-time fee of approximately $10. Staff has concluded that the JPA agreement protects the city from virtually all liability. However, staff would like to note that there could be an estimated reduction in UUT revenues of about $11,500 per year. Staff feels that this will most likely be a benefit to our residents in the form of lower energy bills and more choices to bring increased renewable energy to their homes and businesses. So tonight, in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council read by title only for first reading, waiving further reading, and introduce ordinance 1393 approving the joint powers agreement for the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy and authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program in Sierra Madre. And finally, interim executive director Bill Carnahan has returned this evening to assist with any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Analyst Carlson. Do you have any questions?
I have a few too. We can have.
Sure.
You want to go first, Jean, with your question?
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Carnahan.
Evening.
Good evening. You know, we've met because I sit on the cog board as well and I've had questions before, but I have a few new ones now. So I won't repeat the same questions that I asked before. But I see that it says there's a $10 charge for a customer to, if they, you know, I assume when we implement this, everybody would be, if we implement it, everybody would be on the LACE plan. And then they could opt out and go back to the Edison rates for a $10 fee.
That's correct. That's just to take care of the bookkeeping transfers, that's all.
Okay, so, well, here's my question. I thought it would be a good idea to maybe have a one-time waiver of the fee. Is that possible to do?
Well, actually, they can because they're, in the state law, there are actually four notices required by LACE to the customers on their options. And two of those occur before they take any energy. So if they never made it in, then there's nothing to opt out. So it's only for those folks who would come into the program and then opt out. And there's also two notices after they start in, but before they reach energy after that. So they get four notices before they actually receive any energy.
Well, okay, but here's my thinking. Say a year or two goes on and they are getting energy and then the cost goes up. So I was just thinking it would be fair to the residents to not incur that charge, to say, all right, well, this didn't work out so well. I want to just go back because I'm paying more money.
Well, I think the experience has been that's a pretty nominal fee. And secondly, it's really cost-based because it does cost staff time and whatnot to do the paperwork to transfer them back. And if they don't pay their share of those costs, then the remaining customers have to pick it up. That's really the theory.
Yeah, what I'm trying to do is just shield our citizens from the risk. I mean, we're sitting here making decisions for them. And I just thought this would be a good way to shield.
We certainly could, we could consider that.
Okay, so that is not written or etched in stone yet.
No.
The rules, I see that there's going to be an implementation plan written, and so we would have a chance to influence that by?
And in, in fact, I think you recall after I was here last time, one of the, we were urging folks to come in when the first six-month period, because there was no cost to join.
Yes.
And that would give you the opportunity to help craft the policies and procedures of the JPA.
Yes.
So, you would actually have a direct voice in talking about that.
Okay, all right, well, that's one thing I'm concerned about. Okay, Mr. Carlson, I have a question for you. Is how did staff make, come to the recommendation that we would establish the standard rate as the baseline? I was thinking maybe the fifty percent renewable energy would be a better choice, because it still is less costly than the standard rate. And I mean, that's part of the reason we would be doing this, is to help the state meet its greenhouse gas emissions goals.
AB thirty-two requirements and such.
Yes.
Yeah, staff was just taking a prudent and conservative approach with that. That's up for discussion with Council through the directors and the boards and everything like that. We, we could possibly consider some outreach to see, get a, get a feeling of the community and see what they would want to do on that.
So, that doesn't have to be decided today? Okay, well, I'd recommend that we hold off on that one.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if I've got one more thing here. Oh, okay, I'll just say, well, I'll wait for my comments on this, more a comment than a question. Okay, thank you.
For you, Mr. Carlson, the eleven thousand dollar hit on UUT, is that a conservative estimate? Is that pretty realistic?
That's the most conservative effort, estimate. I was saying that nobody goes for the enhanced renewable option.
Okay.
That's where we would be coming in at.
So, what, what data, what evidence do we have to believe that most of our citizens would take advantage of this?
It's, we're offering it to them. We don't have any data to say, is, you have no polling, that, you know, seventy-five percent of residents are going to go one way or the other. And we're taking a temperature of some of the other cities in the area, and we really feel that this is just an option, and that we're providing an option to them to take or leave.
Okay. All right, that answers my question, thank you.
A question for Mr. Carnahan. Were you about to say something, or?
I was just going to follow up on, on the last conversation. You, you would take an estimated hit of eleven thousand, because the rates are lower, so it's a percent of the rates, and so that's why it would be less. However, that gets offset somewhat, because you have a lot of city loads that, that use electricity, and those are going to be paying lower rates also. So, there's an offset there. You have to see, we have to run the numbers to see how much, but the eleven thousand would be a gross number, not a net number.
Right.
Okay.
Just a few questions. How much of the energy would you be purchasing through the JPA, and how much would you actually be producing? Because I saw from the presentation that one of the plans is to actually build out solar panel facilities. So, I assume you're not going to do that right away, and you're probably going to be purchasing the?
Right. Initially, if you recall, there's a phase-in of the loads that'll be served. Starting in January twenty eighteen, it'll be the county-owned facilities only. And then part of the reason for that is if there's a billing glitch or something like that, you don't affect residential and commercial customers. It's only the county, a single customer. Then in June of twenty eighteen, we pick up the commercial and industrial customers. And then six months after that, the residential customers come in.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll be building our resource portfolio to match the influx of the customers coming in. And sort of out of necessity, in the beginning, it'll be purchase agreements, because there's not time to build facilities in, anyway. But I think, in fact, I was today at the California CCA, the State Association Meeting in Riverside today, and there were about, all the CCAs were there. And some of the ones that are three or four, five years old now are starting to put resources, actually, some have constructed resources. So, then you, you would want to have that kind of a mixed portfolio. You wouldn't want to have all-power contracts. You wouldn't want to own all the resources either. So, yes, it's LACE's intent to do that, but we have to get started up and mature and do, do a plan, you know, to see how we could, we could integrate those. But that is a part of the long-range plan.
Of the other CCAs that are operating the five throughout the state, how many are actually providing the, as you've projected, more affordable energy, also using the fifty percent renewable target?
Let me say it this way, there's, there's different rate philosophies, okay? All of them have shown that there is about a five percent differential between the incumbent IOU rates and the JPA rates. Now, in LACE's case, at least initially, remember, the board makes the decision on, on setting the rates. Initially, all the savings go back to the customers in their monthly bills. That's the way it's been structured. Now, other CCAs, like Marin County, for example, they're more interested in getting to a hundred percent renewables as fast as they can. So, what they do is they charge the same rates as PG&E. This was decided by their board for their, their service area. They generate the five percent differential, and they use it to, to build local projects. They use it to provide incentives for PV installations, things like that, to their, to their customer base. Silicon Valley, for example, guarantees, or not guarantees, but sets theirs at two percent below PG&E, and they generate three percent worth of reserves. At the end of the year, they declare that as a dividend, then they give it back to the individual members for energy projects locally. So, LACE, because we didn't have a robust and full board, the decision was made, the safest thing to do is just give it back in a term of lower, in the, in the form of lower rates. But the board, you know, you, you wouldn't want to be changing first thing, but say, a year from now, as, as the, the LACE board is doing its strategic planning, one of the things the board will want to do is to establish your rate philosophy. So, you have all those options going forward. I don't know if that, that?
Yeah, no, it's helpful. The last question I had was just how, could you walk us through the rate, the rate-setting process? Because you're going to have a bunch of electeds like us that aren't, we have no special, most of us have no specialty in energy production and, and ratemaking, and Edison, and, and the IOUs go through a very, very stringent, regulated ratemaking process, right? That's regulated by the state. So, what would our ratemaking process be?
Okay, first of all, it would be a lot simpler, because their rates actually have to pay for the distribution system, the substation, the meter reading. All we're dealing with here is the energy portion of the bill. And right now, they buy in the same market we do with no markup and sell it. So, so we can, we can compare across the board. And what we would do, as LACE would be, to do the studies, decide what the board philosophy was, and then the board would have hearings, you know, remember, we're going to have a citizen advisory committee as well, made up of citizens advising the board. So, we run it by them, and we get, just like you would do with water rates or anything else, we get all kinds of input, and then the board would decide what kind of rates they wanted to establish.
Okay. And again, so who, who do you think we're going to be buying most of the energy from?
We'll prob, we'll buy it in, in the market, and we probably will have, in that portfolio, probably a dozen or so suppliers, you know, that have projects. We, we have gone out to bid already on the Power Supply Portfolio Manager. Where the, the LACE board meets on Thursday morning, and we're going to award that, that contract. And we also have one for Scheduling Coordinator. You have to have, not only the supply, but you have to have an entity that can interface with the California ISO and meet the, the hourly demands of all the members in LACE. And that change is hourly, so you try to match those up. It's the exact same market that the IOUs operate in as well. So, you know, you, you'll have lots of suppliers, lots of different types of resources. For example, in the renewable area, you wouldn't want to have all, have one wind project in your portfolio. You'd want to have wind projects, you'd want some PV projects, so that you, you get diff, uh, technology differences, and you can get ge, geographic differences. You know, you don't want a, a single wind project, because it might be blowing or not blowing. You'd rather have three or four spread out, so the wind's blowing somewhere, you know, so you at least get part of it.
Okay.
That's a whole process, and there are experts that, you know, LACE would hire consultants who are proficient in, in that to come in and help you with designing. You, you have some decisions to make with regard to the portfolio. Do you want all California projects, or, you know, what do you want, you know?
How much of the initial fee, seed funding of the ten million do you have left? I assume a lot of it, but?
A lot, yeah. We probably have spent half a million of it.
Okay.
The bulk of, the bulk of it is actually to pay for the, the reserve requirements you need for the first purchases in Phase One.
Yeah.
Because you, you send out the bill, you know, you, you procure the energy, and then the customer gets billed, and there's a time delay when it comes back to pay the bill. There's about a sixty-day delay. And so, you need cash flow to cover that period. And one of the things we've done with the, with the proposers for the power supply is we're working with them on delaying billing ninety days, which will cut our need for cash flow on hand by about half. So, that'll, that'll help us.
So, I don't think this applies to Sierra Madre and the other cities until third quarter two thousand eighteen, I think, is when we would actually get to benefit from it?
Uh, June.
Okay, so second quarter. What happens if, after we sign up, let's say we sign up today, or officially the next meeting, and LACE ends up not getting, you know, as much revenue in, and not as many members signing up, and there's a shortfall, are we, you know, Sierra Madre and the other five or six cities that have signed up so far, are we going to be on the hook to?
The only, the only?
Pay anything?
I think of the JPA being a lot like an LLC. If you have partners in an LLC, to insulate you. And so, the only revenues that, that LACE will get is from the sale of energy. Okay? And so, if, if a catastrophe happened, you'd have to adjust rates to accommodate it, but we would not come back to the members, and you're not obligated to, to, to put money into the JPA.
So, if it's a shortfall, you just, you're going to charge higher rates?
Yeah, just like any other utility would do.
Okay. Thanks.
Nothing for me?
Just a, a quick question. If we do enter into this tonight at no cost, I see that possibly by December there will be a cost. What are, what kind of cost are we looking at?
Actually, it could, it will be January first, and, and there may not, quite frankly, be any costs. The board needs to decide whether or not there's a buy-in fee after January. What we have said in the beginning is that we, we can guarantee there won't be any costs before then. And that's the incentive to come in, number one. But even, but that's really to entice cities to come in early, because we want you to be a part of the board as the, as the policies and procedures get established. You know, because we only have, we only have five members now. We have Rolling Hills Estates, we have Su, South Pasadena, we now have West Hollywood, and we have, have the county, and, and, who did I miss?
Calabasas.
Calabasas, I'm sorry, that's where our meeting is, Thursday. And so, we would hope that we would get maybe ten or twelve members and have a robust board. Then we started tackling all those, all those policies. So, by getting in early, we want to get a cross-section. We want to have your voice be heard. So, there's no cost till then. Probably, if there is a cost, if any, it might be pretty nominal after that. But really, I think your benefit in getting in early is you get to help mold the policies of the board, and I think that's important.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back to Council for discussion.
Well, I'll go first. I mean, that was, this is why I asked it to be brought to the Council. My thought was to get in early and be part of the decision-making. I agree with the staff report. I see that there's very little risk to this, but, you know, I mean, there could be risk in the future. One thing I'm concerned about, and I didn't, you know, ask Mr. Carnahan about it, but as Councilmember Harabedian pointed out, that it looks like there's plans to actually do some construction. And, you know, I'm, I just want to be sure that we don't get a construction frenzy here, and that it, it really meets the business need. And the, the need is to just keep costs low and not to create jobs. I mean, one of the benefits they're pointing out is this could create fifteen hundred times, let's see, several dozen of these times fifteen hundred. So, it's a lot of jobs in, in just construction. So, that's, that's a concern I have. But other than that, I just, I really, I've asked questions about this at various presentations. This has been vetted numerous times by the Environmental Committee on the cog and by the full cog board, and everybody seems to be in favor of it. First time it came for a vote, I was the one that voted no, just because I was suspicious of that this was really going to pay out. But since then, it's come up a few more times. So, I'm, I'm fully on board now. I do believe that this has the potential to, not only to reduce greenhouse gases, but to actually reduce rates for our citizens. So, I, I just can't see a reason not to go along. And if we're going to, then we want to get in early and be part of the decision-making process.
Thank you.
I'll just say ditto. Agree.
Yeah, so, you know, I've looked into this quite a bit, and I do think there's, there's still some concerns from a practical perspective of how this really plays out. I think it's just really too early to know how this is going to work. I, I think from an economic perspective, it's hard to fathom that you can both purchase more renewable energy and reduce the rates that, that the ratepayer pays. I would love to be proven wrong, and I hope I am. But buying energy is, is very complicated. It's not like going to the grocery store and buying a loaf of bread. The markets for, for energy, and especially renewable energy, extremely complicated, and very, very smart people that are dealing with it on both sides of it every day. So, I think, you know, I, I'm going to vote to approve this, but I think that going forward, I, I really do have some concerns actually about who's going to be running this process for LACE, what staff looks like, because you're going to need a level of expertise that I'm not sure you can afford. Ten million dollars is a lot, but I'm not sure who, who's going to be hired to kind of running the, especially the procurement of the, the energy. I, I think that this is really a Herculean monumental task of trying to buy this amount of energy at this scale, where, you know, when this fully gets rolled out, where cities like Sierra Madre are involved, you're going to have, you know, thousands and thousands of, of potential ratepayers. So, I, it's a lot of energy. You have companies, you know, investor-owned utilities that have done it for decades, and they still don't do it well. So, I'm hoping we can do it better, but I do think that there is some risk in that the, the longer this goes on, the more entrenched we get, you know. There's a lot of liability that, that comes with things like this from a legal perspective that I hope we never see. But all that being said, I think if the premise of the feasibility study can be trusted, and the reason why I'm really, I was really interested to see how these other five CCAs have been doing, you know, if they are actually passing on savings to the ratepayer and using more renewable energy, then I think that's great. So, I think from an environmental perspective, it's a no-brainer. I think that the more that we can get to using renewable energy, the better. I think the economics just, it's hard to, to make the economics work, but I hope we can. So, for that reason, I'm in support of it.
Okay. You know, I'm so, in support of the program. I, I, I agree, though, just, there just seems to be some liability, especially not knowing who all else is going to join the powers, if it's going to be a small group, if we're going to have a larger group. But at the same time, you know, our environment needs this, and so I'm really to go forward. But certainly, it was something to keep an eye on and maybe have regular updates, so we know what's going on in the City Council.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion?
Well, I'll move to, to approve, as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously.
And do we have to bring it back, or are we done?
We have to appoint a director.
Yeah, we have to appoint a director.
At some point.
We'll put that on a future agenda? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thanks for coming. Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of options for receiving community feedback regarding the Sierra Madre Library, and Madam Assistant City Clerk Aguilar.
I'm back. Good evening. The City Staff comes to you with consideration of options for receiving community feedback. The current library building is over sixty years old and in desperate need of a large financial investment to become, to, to bring it up to date and ADA compliant. An alternative to making improvements to the current library building is to develop the existing recreation center at six-eleven East Sierra Madre Boulevard into a joint library and community center. Funds for this option would be derived from the sale of the existing city-owned library and adjacent property. It is anticipated that the sale of this property would be sufficient to fund the option for moving it to the recreation center. The Library Board of Trustees, the Community Services Commission, and the City Council collectively have, have had several meetings over the last several months, going back to June of this year. And since then, we've received lots of feedback from the community, but no clear direction. So, as such, staff is present, presenting two alternatives for receiving feedback from the community. Option number one is a survey of the community, and option number two is an advisory ballot measure for the April twenty eighteen municipal election. A survey of the community would be conducted by an independent third party and would provide, provide results based on a sample of questions, three to five questions. The cost to conduct the community survey would depend, vary, would, would vary depending on what? The cost to conduct the community survey would depend, vary, would, would vary depending on what the city council is looking for. And it would only take a sample of about fifteen hundred residents. Another type of survey would be done by email, and the cost for mail vers- mailing it or doing by email is sixteen thousand and twelve thousand respectively. The second option is to add an advisory ballot measure to the April 2018 election. An advisory ballot measure is a means to provide information only and is not legally binding. The approximate cost to add a ballot measure is about ten thousand dollars. Staff is seeking city council direction on how to proceed, and this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, do we have any questions for our Assistant City Clerk?
When would we do, possibly do a survey? I know, Mr. City Manager, you had said that you're proceeding ahead with a, a design for the building and a layout and parking, and you did want to do more town hall, at least one more, possibly how many?
The plan right now, Councilmember, is to do two more public forums, one at the library, one at the community center. The survey, we would get started on pretty quickly, but we wouldn't anticipate releasing it until after the release of the drawings for the library, and we talk through issues and refine that. So we wouldn't plan on releasing the survey until after the second planned public meeting, library forum.
It wouldn't, it would make more sense to wait until after the two town forums to do the survey afterwards, where people might have the opportunity to, to see something concrete as far as a proposal.
I'm saying we get started on the survey, wouldn't release it to the public until after the second forum. We do all the background work. We get all the, everything set to go as far as releasing it. We'd have to work with the company. It's about three months pre-work to get them ready to send out either the emails. So we'd get all that done at the conclusion of the second forum. We would then release the survey to the public to get their feedback.
So you deploy the survey?
Yeah, deploy the survey, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that makes sense, yeah. Okay. Oh, well, just another question. I mean, if we were to do a ballot measure, it doesn't cost more to have two questions, would it?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
So one ballot measure is, is approximately eight to ten thousand dollars additional. We are going to be using Martin and Chapman again.
Yeah.
For our next election. I have not checked with them on what it would cost for an additional ballot measure.
Well, not, well.
Not a ballot measure, but an extra question. So instead of a yes or no.
So we could, yeah, you could just have two questions, like.
We, we could look at that. My assumption is they're still tallying questions. They're still preparing. And they still have to go through the process, so I, I wouldn't anticipate we would get a break on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none from here, I'll ask if there are any comments from the public on this item. And if you do, please come forward and state your name and your address, please.
We're a really quiet group, don't we?
I figured this is where some, some folks are going to be speaking.
Hi, my name is Rich Proctor. I'm a library trustee, 257 Wilson Street. I just, you know, I actually, the, the way of assessing public opinion is, is fine. I just wanted to emphasize that having helped conduct the first meeting, what's going on in the community right now is a very healthy and vigorous process. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm certain if we have at least one more forum, hopefully two, what will happen is all of these issues that are bubbling up and that were brought up at the first meeting, the first meeting will be clarified, and maybe we'll even be able to come to form, some form of consensus, at least a consensus of what the exact wording of the ballot issues will be. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's great. We must have had fifty people at the first meeting, and there was a wildly diverse idea of what they wanted to do. But everyone was unified there. They all showed up because they loved the library and they wanted it to continue to be a vital part of the community. Whether it's that building, whether they, whether we have a ballot measure to, you know, fix that place, whether they sell the back property and we use that money, whether they move the library, everybody was invested in the idea that the library is, you know, is, is a part of the Sierra Madre community, that they wanted to continue to exist. So, anyway, just wanted to emphasize the system's working.
Thank you, Trustee Proctor.
One comment on that as well, Mayor. I apologize. I should have mentioned, the reason we're bringing this forward now is if we did, if council decides to move forward with the non-binding ballot measure, we have, we have to inform the county fairly early on. I think the twenty-fourth was the last meeting. We had an option to approve it. So we, we do intend to get more feedback at the two public forums, but we didn't want to decide at the conclusion of the second public forum. Gee, we wish we'd have a ballot measure survey and then not have the time to get it done.
Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry, I missed. What's the date that you would have to commit to?
It's, it's actually, if it's our own ballot measure, it's actually January, but that means we need to do it by December. It's, it, the Martin Chapman schedule of dates and is, is really difficult to understand. But that, if it's our ballot measure and not one being brought to us, it's January thirteenth, I believe, this year. But that's just so close to the wire that if we do decide to do that, we should really be shooting for the first meeting in December and no later. And that's usually when we call, when the council calls elections and adopts the various resolutions regarding candidate statements as well as any ballot measures.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. And, and just the que- the question regarding the forums, you said the second forum, you're expecting that to occur when?
We're going to, once we get the firm under contract to do the drawings and we get a timeframe from them, we'll then schedule the second forum. So we, we currently don't have a timeframe yet. It's all dependent on how quickly they can turn around the potential drawings with the parking and the additions.
I see. Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other persons that would like to comment on this item from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring that back to council for discussion.
Well, my view is that both are good options and both are imperfect options. The, the survey is, I think, probably more, I think it's more comprehensive, and I think it'll get us, give us a better idea as to what people really think when considering the whole picture. Because the survey company will be able to draft a set of questions that will really give them a full flavor of what we're dealing with as a city. It's not simply, do you want the library? Do you not want the library? Do you want the library where it is? Or do you want it in new op-, you know, in a new location? It's really a pretty complicated question that goes to, what can we afford? And what's the best model for service, et cetera? And I think the survey would probably be the better avenue of getting a flavor of what the community thinks. I do think, though, that, you know, there's always going to be an issue of what the community trusts and what they trust in the outcome. And when we come back and say the survey said this, even if it's a reputable survey company and they do things completely statistically above board, you're always going to get some folks that are going to be pretty weary of it or wary of it. I think that, in my view, if we believe that, and on the advisory ballot measure, you can argue about getting as many people to weigh in as possible, and that's why I think the advisory ballot measure has a lot of benefit too. But I think it's going to be such a, such a, you know, select amount of words that you can put into that question, and a lot of folks don't read the pros and cons beforehand. I think it's going to be hard. A lot of people might be voting on something they, that they are not exactly sure is, or they don't have full information on. So to me, if we think that both have some value, and I do, I think that both have value and they both are going to be helpful in this, the costs are really minimal. I mean, to me, I don't think we should be making this decision on costs. And if we think that one or both of these are valuable, then, and I think that they're both valuable, I think we should just do both. I mean, I think having the survey would be very valuable, and I'd also like to hear from the community at large through an election what they think. So my vote, although it's, I don't know if it's an either-or, but I would just do both. I mean, really, it's, the total cost, it looks on the high end, would be twenty-six thousand dollars to do both. And when you're considering something as important as, and as expensive as this is going to be, I think twenty-six thousand dollars is really, is really a drop in the bucket. So my, my, my view is really just to do both.
When I came in here, I, I was thinking about all the discussions I've listened to. I was at one of the meetings. I don't know if they've had one since then, but the one at Hart Park House. And I think the trustee Proctor very aptly described the, the diversity and the strongly-held opinions. So I am, I really do believe we need some, to take the temperature of our public. I don't think there's any doubt in my mind that we're not sure where they're at on this. Kind of like to see what, hear what the rest of the council thinks about these costs, because twenty-six thousand is, you know, it's not, it isn't, it's not a lot compared to some things we do, but it is kind of a lot of money. I was think, coming here thinking that the, the survey would be better, and not because I don't think the people should vote. They should. Maybe I can be persuaded to do both, but it seems like you, you get a richer, deeper, better picture from the survey, if it's done right by a, you know, the right firm using the right methodology. So I'd like to see, hear what everyone else says, thinks about this.
Well, for me, you know, both, of course, we, you know, number one, we want to hear from the public. We'll do it in our forums. We're bringing our drawings. So both, like Councilman Harabedian said, Harabedian said, both ways are good and both are flawed. So my, my first reaction was, why don't we do the survey and from the survey be able to form the question for the ballot? I don't know if we can do that.
Timing wise.
Timing wise. But I think, you know, I think both would be good going forward. And we're talking about a lot of money, for a lot of money, twenty-six thousand dollars is not, is a drop in the bucket. And this is real important to the community, for the city, and I want to make sure we get it right. And I want to hear from as many people as we can. And the survey will give us a different perspective than the advisory ballot measure. But I think having both of them would be able to really come with a very strong and firm decision.
Well, let me ask a question about the ballot measure. Councilman Harabedian, what, how, how do you see, what, how would you form a question for the ballot?
Yeah, I think it'd be really tough. Yeah, I've struggled with that, and that's why I think the ballot measure, although you'd be hearing from more people, I think getting the question to be scientifically, you know, reliable and, and actually conveying the true nature of what we want them to opine on, I think is really tough. So I, I, that's where I struggle, is that how are we going to come up with a question that's really comprehensive in however many words we have, seventy-five or, yeah, seventy-five words? I mean, it's, it's nearly impossible unless you have folks actually reading the pros and the cons and everything.
Because it's not a yes or no.
Right, it's not, it's not really a yes or no.
Unless it was multi-question saying that if, then what?
That's why I'm asking the question, because I thought maybe the only.
It is a yes or no. It's, it's advisory ballot measures, that's, they're, whatever the description is, it's seventy-five words or less, and it's a yes or a no. And even though it's only advisory, it will be drafted, it must be drafted like a question. And so, we, we have to formulate what that question is in seventy-five words, and it is going to be a yes or no.
So this is the problem I have with the ballot measure, because, you know, of my limited imagination of what we could possibly do with it. My thinking was, the question should be something like, should the city follow the recommendations of the Library Board of Trustees and Friends of the Library and move the library as described? I don't know how else to, and, but as, as you say, it doesn't really get underlying because a lot of people might just say, well, no, I don't want it to move, without knowing all the underlying reasons and what the alternatives are.
Well, yes, you want it to move, right?
Yeah.
But then what do you do with the building? That's another question.
Well, see, that's a whole nother question.
Right.
So this is, so that, that's the problem I have with it. I, I'm just thinking that I'm, I'm all, I'm, you know, concerned to a degree that it could actually complicate things if we were to do a survey and do that. And there could be a, a scenario where the ballot measure surprisingly tells us something completely at odds with what the survey did because we can't elaborate. And then what do we do?
Executive decision.
That's why I wanted to do the survey and then draft the question from the survey.
So this is a really important thing. And, you know, my thinking is, is just like we did with the UUT, Councilmember Delmar. I mean, the, the feedback that we had from attending that and talking to people that were there, I felt like coming out of there, I had a good sense of what the community wanted. In this case, this to me is even more significant because it's like permanent. You can't, once you do it, you can't undo it. So even though I would feel confident after two more town halls that I think I would have a pretty good sense of where the community wants to go with this, I really think it's important to do the survey just to, to make sure that there's something we haven't left on the table or misread somehow. And again, it's the documentation behind it that's really useful. So I, I'm just leaning towards absolutely, let's do the survey, and I'm not sure about the ballot measure.
I think if we had more time, and again, looking in hindsight, it would have been nice to be able to, I think, get the information and the feedback from the survey. Because I think it does allow us to get more information. It's not limited to seventy-five words, not yes or no, if then, then what, kinds of questions. But given that we don't have that luxury of time, I came in here thinking, let's just go hard and fast with an advisory ballot measure, because you have numbers you can refer to. And we know that anyone that wanted to vote on this issue, we have some numbers that we can refer to. I like the idea of going both. Now, Councilmember Capocia, I brought up a very valid point. What if the ballot measure comes back and, and is contradictory to what we're seeing in the survey? I think the town hall meetings are going to be absolutely crucial, and, and I'd like to see how we can make those a little bit more robust. I know we had good turnout at the first one, but similar again to the UUT, I mean, we just made every effort to get out to different pockets and not just have the same folks that are coming. So I think that's going to be imperative for these next town hall forums. And if a third one is required, then a third one is required. But given that there are so many questions about what this move could mean or not move could mean, I think the survey is going to lend so much more information for us to work off of. The question in that is how many people actually filled it out and what's the percentage? And I know they're statistically supposed to be getting samples of those that would be significantly, what's it, significant? What's that word?
Statistic.
Yes, statistically significant, thank you. So, you know, I, I think that's a good starting point. I wish we could have more time so we can think about that ballot measure. And I know the dollar amount is not much, but I, I think right now, I'm thinking the survey in itself will provide good information for us to take the next step. So my thought right now is, I'd support the survey itself, even though I was kind of thinking we should go both, but I think we just should go with the survey at this point.
Well, I was looking to be persuaded to do the ballot. I haven't been persuaded yet.
Yeah.
You want to take another shot?
No, look, if I had to, you know, my view.
The attorney, put him back on.
No, my view is, if I had to pick one, it'd obviously be the survey. But I think that having both, I think the value of the ballot measure is just, we're really, in my mind, leaving no stone unturned. You know, we're, we're going into such a, we're going, it's a significant decision. I think all of us are getting approached on a weekly basis about it. And there's not a unified voice, in my view. I haven't gone to the, I haven't gone to the town hall.
You're getting at the credibility of our credibility.
I think it just makes our life selfishly, the council, I think it makes our life hopefully a little bit easier. I think Councilwoman Capocia brings up a, a very prob-, you know, it's a possible scenario where the survey comes out strongly showing one route, and then the ballot measure comes out and, and shows a completely different one. I think we're, I think we'll be able to draft, especially in light of the survey, questions that are, that are at least close, close enough to where I think we'll get a similar result.
When do we need to have it done by again?
January.
I don't think, the timing works, right?
Really December, early December.
I mean, it seems like we could get the survey results back.
But we needed three-month lead time on the survey, right?
The survey will not, not be ready.
The survey's going to be done in what, February? The survey's going to be done in what, February?
Uh, if we started now, um, yeah, March, April.
So, I, you know, I, I don't, I'm not wedded to this, and, you know, if we don't do the ballot measure, that's fine, but I just think that, uh, when folks, you know, when folks look and see what we do as a council, I think they're going to say, what did you do? You know, what did you do to make sure you did it, did the right thing? And then, to me, what else could we have done? We did the town halls, we did the survey, we did the ballot measure, and I think, yeah, you might have some, an effect of getting too much noise and too much information, but I would rather get more information than less.
Let me, let me make a comment, maybe a way to do it is, if we, is there a way to word it vague enough to, uh, to, uh, basically say, we don't know what, you know, let's just think of it this way, we don't, by the time we write the ballot measure, we won't really know what the recommended plan is then. But if we leave it vague, the question vague enough, like, shall the city implement the recommendations as given?
You, you could, the council could provide direction to staff to bring back some sample questions, and, uh, for, um, one of your, you know, soon, next council meeting even, and, uh, then you could massage those and choose one, and then decide. And perhaps by then, there'll be, um, even more public participation, and people may have some, um, input into what the right question should be. Um, but, I, you know, you have time to do it, just not a lot of time, and, uh, you can look at different approaches, and then provide further direction to staff if you want to see this on, uh, future agenda.
You know, and, and I do like the survey, because it, it does sort of take it out of our hands, right? Um, and we have an organization that's doing it for us. With the advisory ballot measure, I always wonder if we get the criticism, it was just the way it was worded, or people got, you know, thought it was different, and then we actually have to write the, the ballot measure, so, that's why I would want to do both, I, and not just one of you.
Well, but if I propose this, why don't, I would think we have a consensus on the survey right now?
Yeah.
And why don't we do what our, our city attorney tells us, is just have staff come back and present some questions, and we can make a decision later if we like the question.
And then we can kind of see what those questions, really what they would look like, and how they would feel.
Yeah, because if we get the questions right, I, I would agree that that'd be good to do it.
But if we're in agreement with the survey, um, and we can take a vote on that tonight, and we move that forward, they can at least start moving the wheels on that piece.
This, this is actually just a direction to staff, so you don't even, um-
Oh, okay.
If, if the city manager understands the direction.
Go! Okay. So that's good direction then, so, um-
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll proceed with the survey. Uh, council will also have the opportunity to customize the questions on the survey, so we'll be doing a lot of wordsmithing.
Yeah, I don't really want to be involved in that.
I think the-
No, I'm serious, I really don't think the city-
Councilmember Johns like to be involved in that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Plural, plural, Johns.
I would, yeah.
Okay, great, so we have enough direction, anything else you need on that item, Mr. City Manager?
We're good, ma'am.
Good, okay, so our next item on the agenda is number five, the consideration of Resolution seventeen dash four four, and it looks like we have Assistant City Manager Medina that will present that piece.
Tonight, we present to you the option to amend our purchasing policy, which is Chapter three point zero eight of our, the city's municipal code. The purpose of our purchasing policy is to establish procedures for efficient procurement of goods and services, as well as public projects. Purchase goods and services, offering the best value for the cost, as well as exercising financial control over purchases. The regulations that govern, govern our purchasing policy are Government Code Sections fifty-four two oh one through fifty-four two oh five, require, required that the local agency adopt policies and procedures for purchases of supplies and equipment. Also, Public Contract Code Sections twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-nine twenty-nine provide for specific requirements on bidding and noticing of public projects. They also define what a public project is. We also have the Uniform Cost Accounting, the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which I'll be referring to as the Act, which is Section twenty-two thousand, also the Public Contract Code. The Act, um, provides for uniform cost accounting standard procedures for public projects, and also provides for increased bidding limits for agencies that opt to be subject to that, to the Act. So how public work or public projects are defined is any construction, improvement, demolition of publicly owned or operated facilities. It does not include maintenance work or repair work, uh, nothing that's routine. As I mentioned before, Public Contract Code require, has a specific bidding requirements for public projects, which means it's, um, it's, uh, time-consuming and also costly, um, to staff. The Uniform or, uh, Construction Cost Accounting Act, or the Act, provides for increasing bidding limits for public projects. Uh, the first threshold is forty-five thousand, which is force-by-force account, which means the city could, uh, provide for these projects by, with city workforce, or through a negotiated contract or a purchase order. The next threshold is forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and this could be contracted out by informal bidding procedures per the Act. From a hundred and seventy-five thousand, over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that is con, to be contracted by formal bidding procedures, also per the Act. Currently, our purchasing policy, uh, looks like, um, on the screen here, on the chart, so anything up to a thousand, it's a direct purchase, no quotes required, department head approval. From, uh, over a thousand to five thousand, it's a direct competitive purchase, which means we go through a competitive process, and we get, uh, three quotes, and so also subject to department head approval. From five thousand to twenty-five thousand, it's informal bidding procedure, which requires ten-day notice, inviting bids, informal bids, three sealed bids, and this is subject to city manager approval. Anything greater than twenty-five thousand requires a formal bidding, uh, process, which requires thirty-day published notice, inviting bids, formal bids, and three sealed bids, uh, city council approval. This is where, um, staff will come to you, um, asking to go out to bid, and then they come back to you for a word of the bid. So it's a time-consuming process. What staff is recommending is going to two different charts. One is for proposed purchases, um, I'm sorry, proposed purchasing procedures for goods and services that are non-public projects. With this, um, chart, you will be looking at anything, um, up to two thousand, it's a direct purchase, no quotes required, department head approval. Two thousand to five thousand, direct competitive pricing, which means three quotes, department head approval. Five thousand to forty-five thousand, also direct competitive pricing, city manager approval. Between forty-five thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand, direct competitive pricing, three quotes, uh, city council approval. Anything greater than a hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's a Sierra moderate formal process, which is a competitive pricing procedure, requires three proposals, uh, three sealed bids, and city council approval, of course. The second chart will, would be for, only for public projects, and this will be in accordance with the Act. So, we're taking advantage of the increased thresholds here for public projects. So from zero to forty-five thousand, it's the same process as for, uh, non-public projects. What changes is from forty-five thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, then it would require to, to, contracts were required to go through the public project informal bidding procedure, which is defined by the Act, and this will come to city council. Anything greater than a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we're required a formal bidding procedure per the Act also, and come to city council. So as you can see, by increasing the thresholds here and the limits, it would save staff time, uh, on contract, you know, signing contracts and purchases. Right now, our limits are extremely low. Anything over five thousand requires a lot of approvals, uh, sealed bids, which means, uh, time and money, also on notices and so forth, and publications. So by streamlining the process, making it more efficient, the city could save ti, uh, staff time, also get, um, uh, projects done on a more timely basis. So the recommended actions for tonight are the approval of Resolution seventeen forty-four, which is selecting to be subject to the Act, and this is a requirement, um, the commission at the state level would require a resolution to be approved by the city council, uh, being subject to the Act, and being able to take advantage of the increased bidding limits. At the same time, they do require that you have, um, informal bidding procedures in accordance to the Act, uh, adopted. So that would be revising the current purchasing policy, so it would require an approval of the ordinance thirteen ninety-two, which amends the purchasing policy as a whole, and also in, implementing the new informal bidding procedures per the Act. So it's twofold. Uh, this concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions.
So, thank you, Assistant Manager Medina. Do you have any questions for her?
Yeah, I do have a question. Director Medina, do you know how long this Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act has been in effect?
It's been, um, don't quote me, I, um, I believe it was around two thousand.
Okay, do you have any idea why this hasn't been proposed earlier?
Uh, no, I, I mean, since I've been with the city, I see a reference to the Act on our purchasing policy, but when I look on the commission's side, we are not subject to it, because we never opted to be part of the Act.
Yeah.
Those are actually my questions, so thank you for raising those.
Uh, let me see, I think I have a couple more here, hold on just a second. Okay. None there. No, I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm thinking the, the efficiencies you might get are going to be primarily at the department head, head level, because of the ability to spend more money?
Uh, beyond that, because the current restrictions, the limits are so low, where we, the notice requirements, we have to, for example, if we are issuing, um, any type of purchase, uh, for fifty-five hundred, that's just over the, um, competitive bidding procedure, that requires, uh, notice, uh, ten-day notice, plus, um, request for, uh, bids and sealed bids, which takes time and also, um, and money, um, sending out the notifications, and also a lot of contractors are, they're not willing to put all that effort into submitting sealed bids for that such a low contract.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment, if anyone in the audience would like to comment on this item, please come forward. And please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Barbara Lee Klein, Assistant Mayor Madre. A couple things, and I'm going to, um, go off subject towards the end and come back around to, I think it was number four. But on these contracts, it makes sense at this point, because really, in all the years I've been attending council meetings and watching the past directors hold bids, they use the same groups over and over and over again. I've been here when guys have sat here arguing that they haven't had a chance to submit a bid, and it's actually had to go through, through the process again, because that was true. So if they are not submitting bids at the level of fifty-five thousand, then, okay. But if this does go into procedure, I would ask them that the city manager, it would have to be rewritten by the attorney, but to receive a weekly report on what's being spent, what's coming in, what's going out, something to keep track of. I know he has to approve anything over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but the fear of anything running loose, and having a department, let's say, maybe not crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, is really quite concerning, because Sierra Madre's had a past with having difficulties in that area. So if I, I think I'm making some sense, I'm trying not to get into too deep with, uh, some politics here. Um, but if it's something that can simplify the guys going out to bid and getting low bids to take care of certain things, great. Otherwise, I think the process that we have works, and we haven't had that many major repairs come through town, so, you know. Um, just real quick, I'm going to touch on number four, did we have public comment after number four, or did I miss that? I know that people spoke before, but then, there was no public comment or public feedback, but it might have just been a receive and file.
Uh, there was public comment, and then we came back for discussion.
Okay, so that's what it was, came back for discussion, that's when I walked in late. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. I'll start and just say that, you know, from the operational standpoint, and I mean, and from what we've seen on the city councils, to some of the bottlenecks on some of the issues, that we had to wait for council meetings for an issue to come. Um, I can appreciate the fact that there are thresholds that are, um, supported by the Accounting Act, and it is a surprise that it's taken so a while to get to this point, especially if this is, these thresholds were established, um, a while ago, but, um, I, I'm definitely in support of this, I, I'd like to see some of these efficiencies here, um, and I, I can appreciate Ms. Barbara Lee's comment about seeing, you know, doing check-ins and knowing where we're going, I think with the warrants, that helps us at least with the checks and seeing where those are going. Uh, contracts, I'm sure that there's a way that we can stay on top of, you know, what contracts have been, um, signed, but in terms of the resolution and support of approving both of them? Both, one? Oh, the resolution and the ordinance, is that correct?
I agree. It's a good idea.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree too, I mean, there's a little bit of a trade-off here, where what we're doing is handing a little bit more flexibility to the city staff, but, uh, I just remember being in a similar situation where I used to work, and the VP, uh, just told us, I'm trying to make your job a little easier for you, I'm counting on you to do the right thing, and I could create all these controls to regulate what you're doing, but the bottom line is, you have to trust your people to do the right thing, and, uh, one thing that I feel good at least about the staff we have right now, is, I mean, I know that you're absolutely committed to not raising taxes. If you were pushing to raise taxes at the same time, I might be a little suspicious, but, uh, I think this is, uh, you know, a, a good, I mean, it's, it's in state law, and I just want to give you the opportunity to save a little time and effort, and who knows, it might even save money, because we're not putting the other contractors through this, uh, long bidding process for a small contract, so.
Staff time.
Okay, do I see your motion?
I'll move for approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. We'll go on to the next item. Uh, item number six, which is Resolution seventeen dash four five, Adoption of Debt Issuance and Management Policy, and we'll invite Assistant City Manager Medina again to the podium.
Good evening again, City Council, Mayor and City Councilmembers. We have another, um, that, a policy, uh, the staff is recommending for approval. Uh, it's, it's approval of the debt, uh, policy, which, um, um, it would be a new policy from, uh, the records, looking back, it's a new policy, and, um, it's good business practice to have a debt policy in place, to provide guidelines for the issuance of debt, as well as the management of debt. So, um, the proposal is to adopt a debt policy, and also to be in compliance with, um, amendments to Government Section eighty-eight fifty-five, which now requires a debt policy to be approved by the local agency when approving, uh, new debt service, or new debt. So in order to be com, with compliance, as well as, uh, be, have a prudent, um, practice in place, and so we are recommending approval of Resolution seventeen forty- approval of Resolution 1745, Adopting a Debt Issuance and Management Policy. Thank you. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Any questions for her?
Does anybody, I have questions, but would somebody else like to go first?
Go ahead.
Okay. Can you, yeah, just explain on, it's the attachment in bracket, page two. The weighted average maturity of the debt allocated to the project will not exceed 120% of the average reasonably expected economic life of the project being financed. Can you explain that in layman's terms? I read that five times, I wasn't sure what that meant.
Usually, what we mean, we don't want to borrow, have a debt out for 30 years, and the life of the asset is going to last only 20 years or so. So we don't want to issue debt that exceeds the life of the asset, pretty much.
Okay.
At least not substantially, only 20% more.
Yes. Okay, then further down, the city will generally seek to structure debt with aggregate-level annual debt service payments over the life of the debt. What does that mean?
That means that the debt payments will be more or less even over the life of the debt, for example, that we don't have a balloon payment at the end, or that we go interest-only in the beginning. We try to level it off, so we have payments throughout the debt service.
Okay.
Over the years of the debt.
So this is different than what was done in the past?
Yeah, Councilmember Capocha, under the adoption of this debt issuance and management policy, the 2002 bonds probably would not have qualified under several different ways.
All right, thank you. Okay, what are capital appreciation bonds? That's in Section C here, Bond Maturity Options. If you don't know, that's okay, it's not that. I just didn't know these different serial bonds, term bonds, capital appreciation bonds.
Typically, we don't, I haven't done much with the capital appreciation bonds. It's, you're pretty much betting on the increase of the capital for that. Serial bonds means that there are different bond issuance with different timing, just not one bond. And typically, you issue serial bonds because there's different timings based on capital needs and interest rates, so you stagger the bonds.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of issuing one bond.
Okay, what is a call feature?
Call feature is when you have the option to call the bonds or pay them off early.
Oh.
Sometimes you gotta, you don't have an opening until maybe 10 years down the road, and you cannot call those bonds or pay them off early.
Okay.
Pay a penalty if you don't have an opening.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick question. Given that we haven't had this policy before, and I see that it meets the requirements of Senate Bill 1029, but did we get this language from somewhere? Is this a sample policy?
Yes, well, actually, it's in compliance with GF4A proposals. They have a template debt policies or recommendations, best practices. Also, we obtain a current template, and we work from it and tailor it to the city's City Mayor Madre. And we also look at the guidelines of SB 1029 to make sure it's in compliance.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just, yeah, two quick ones. The, related to Councilmember Capocha's question, when we're looking at a project's quote-unquote "useful life," because we have to figure out what the useful life is in order to figure out whether we're actually going to take on long-term debt, are we just using a depreciation schedule or an amortization schedule? Or how are we, how are we coming up with a useful life number, I guess?
Depending on the industry, well, there's always IRS schedules that we typically don't use in municipal accounting, not the depreciation, but we could look at those, because the depreciation per IRS schedules, they provide possible useful lives, or what they've seen in, also in the industry, for example, in water, there's industry experts that provide that kind of information. So you look at the experts and ask, also, your department heads, and ask them what typical useful life of those assets are, and that's where we base it on. And then we use that in order to depreciate our assets. And sometimes we see a difference, and then we might adjust for future assets that we purchase.
That makes sense. My only other question was the size of our reserve fund. It looks like, under law, you can do the lesser of 10% of our, of par amount of bonds, and then 125% of the average annual debt service, and/or 100% of the maximum annual debt service?
Correct.
So where, if, I guess going forward, do you know which one we would choose? Which is the lesser?
Well, usually, it's what they recommend when you issue the bond. Currently, we have that reserve in our 1998A as well as our 2003 bonds, and it's about the average of our debt service payments, 1.25 of that. With the new loan refinancing, it does not require a debt service reserve, which is different than our debt covenant, which is also deals with a 1.25, two different things.
So we meet the 1.25 right now?
Correct.
Regardless, okay.
But our loan refinancing will not require that debt reserve.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this issue, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion.
Did our treasurer, I see our treasurer in the audience, did he have any comments?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Everything okay from your perspective? He came here.
Oh, we are just asking if our fellow treasurer would like to comment on this issue and/or if you're A-OK.
Yeah, thumbs up.
Thank you, City Treasurer Mario.
I'll move for approval. I don't really have any comments to make.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that...
I'd like to comment that our Assistant City Manager Medina should consider teaching this subject at a university.
Right?
Got it down.
Totally. Well done.
And thank you for doing this. It's much needed.
Okay, so that passes unanimously, motion carried. Okay, so for our last item, I'll just do a quick check with my colleagues here. Do we need a five-minute break, or are we ready to go forward?
I'm okay going along.
Good. All right, so our last item is Item 7, Consideration of Resolution 17-52 to authorize, authorization to amend the Classification and Compensation Plan and Salary Matrix and approve the reorganization of the Fire Department. And so we have Human Resource Manager Hernandez here to present this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. After receiving valuable feedback at the September 12 council meeting regarding the proposed changes to the Fire Department, council directed staff to come up with a model that would begin moving the Fire Department to a full-service department. Resolution 1752 proposes the creation of four new classifications of full-time engineer, firefighter, paramedic, single-function firefighter, and single-function paramedic. Essentially, the department will be operating with a 3-2 model consisting of a captain, engineer, and a firefighter, paramedic on the engine, and paramedics operating the rescue ambulance. A couple of things that I want to mention is the salary matrix that was originally attached to the staff report has been updated, and you were given one just a few minutes ago. Originally, it had, we had grouped the positions together, engineer with the firefighter, paramedic, and then the single-function firefighter and paramedic. We just separated them so that they stand alone. Additionally, we included two additional steps to the firefighter, paramedic, and engineer to provide us with, that would allow us to have maximum flexibility when we start our recruitment process for the positions. Also attached to the staff report was the job description for the engineer and the firefighter, paramedic. These, this document is a working document, and it was included in the staff report for illustration purposes. HR will be making some final modifications to the job descriptions before we begin with our recruiting. So to implement the proposed reorganization, staff is recommending the city council adopt Resolution 1752, reorganizing of the Fire Department by adding the four new classifications and amending the classification plan and salary matrix. This concludes the, my presentation, and we're open for any questions.
Thank you, Manager Hernandez. Do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I do. So the 3-2 that is being proposed was a little different than what we heard from the public on September 12th. So what is the reason to go with the 3-2?
The 3-2 staffing is the minimum acceptable staffing in Los Angeles County. Our neighbor agencies, when they were referring to NFPA 1710, I believe, talking about the 4-2 staffing, 3-2 is technically an assessment engine. Our proposition to council tonight in Phase 1 is to get trained, paid, career personnel on the engine, and then to work with our neighboring agencies to determine what is the next appropriate step.
Okay.
Tonight, what we want to do is make the community safer. As council knows, we often have shifts where we have no firefighters and not the appropriate amount of staff. So tonight, we want to make sure we always have a minimum of three people on the engine. Moving forward, there will be additional recommendations.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so you're, you're going to, initially to staff, you're going to open it up to inside for starters, so paramedics that we have that qualify could become full-time firefighters, and we'd put them through training at the academy. All right, is that...
So that's correct, council member. The first internal promotional recruitment will be for anyone who meets the minimum standards of fire medic, using this position as an example. We do have current paramedics that are hired, current, as single-function medics who have fire certifications.
Oh, they do.
Should they choose to apply, they meet the minimum qualifications, and they could be extended a job offer. If after we go through that first wave, we haven't filled all the positions, we will then open it up internally to any staff member who has a correct licensure for paramedic, and the city will then pay effectively at a fire medic trainee level to put that person through a fire academy. And once they receive their Fire 1 or their fire license, they will then move up to regular pay and be on the engine. It's very similar to what council looked for in the Police Department.
Yeah. Okay, now, the salary, again, this question was asked via email, but you're establishing the salary for the firefighters and the paramedics. The single function, exactly the same, is the market, does rate or the market demand? Is that, I mean, how did you come to those numbers?
What we looked at initially was the single function versus the multi-function.
Yeah.
Being cross-trained, enabled to work, for example, either on the engine or the ambulance brings more value to the city. What the market will bear, I think, may be a different question. When we adopted the, as Mr. Hernandez just said, when we brought forth for adoption the salary matrix, we're trying to give ourselves maximum flexibility. So if we end up hiring someone who doesn't have fire certification, for example, we don't want to pay them as if they're a fire medic until they actually are a fire medic.
Yeah.
And then move them up as a correct licensure is achieved. I think we believe that our pay range for a single-function firefighter is fair, and a single-function medic is also fair. As we move forward, most agencies, on the engine in particular, are looking at cross-function, multi-function, or dual-function, and that's what we intend to move to.
Yeah, right.
So that's where we'll spend our energy of getting our people trained and certified to be multi-function.
Yeah, so when you open a job up, that's what you're really putting out for, is the multi-function?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, you're not going to open up for a single, well, you might though, in the future, right? For a single-function paramedic?
It's possible in the future. When we talked about future recommendations coming forward, if we decide, based on the feedback from our neighboring agencies, that we should go to 4-2 staffing, there's some question about what's the best way to put that fourth position on? Is it a single-function firefighter? Is it a cross-function? What we've committed to doing to all our partner agencies is after we get to 3-2, we're going to take the feedback of our partner agencies. So again, what we're showing council is there's a wide range of outcomes, and we want to be prepared to respond to whatever additional advice and guidance we get from our peer agencies.
Yeah, okay. All right, fair enough, sounds good.
With this proposed structure, are we still considering volunteer firefighters at some point?
So we will maintain an auxiliary fire force. It'll be different than how we treat it today. We, currently, we count that when we talk about staffing in response. We'll talk about volunteer firefighters. As we move forward, we'll have an auxiliary program. It will be for training. It will be for a feeder system as, into our agency as positions open up, but we will not include in 3-2 or 4-2 staffing any auxiliary personnel that we have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have one thing that's, I guess, is causing me a little HR heartburn. So it says here that the internal promotion opportunity in any current employee meeting the minimum criteria of the position will be eligible to apply, but they're not guaranteed a position? Are they eligible to apply, and what?
If we have more applications on positions, we can only offer the number of positions available.
Okay. And this is where internal will be first, right?
We wanted to do internal first, hopefully, internal only, but again, it depends on who applies.
And do you apply any sort of seniority in making a decision?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Seeing other questions from council, I will open this up to public comment. And if you wish to make a comment on this item, if you can, please state your name, your address, and again, limit to three minutes.
Bob Burnett, 400 East Montecito. I just want to make sure that I understand what the proposal is. It is a captain, engineer, a dual-function paramedic firefighter on the engine with an auxiliary or volunteer. Is that what you're describing?
That's correct.
And then on the RA is two single-function paramedics? Is that right?
Currently, yes.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that's going to dovetail down the road to multi-function paramedics on the RA, hopefully?
Based on feedback from our neighboring agencies, that's what we've committed to, is make the engine safe first, and then get feedback on the engine, and then come back and get feedback on the RA.
Great. When you're asking, when you say feedback, is that as far as the auto aid is concerned?
Auto aid...
Because my concern is always going to be the auto aid, because that is what we have to be involved in.
So the, without detailing too much, the auto aid is in the background to all the discussions. The agencies we've talked to have said the ambulance for auto aid is not a large concern for them, but the engine is.
Because it'll be an assessment rig?
Correct.
Okay. So, again, clarifying that if we go to this model, will we be in automatic aid?
Not immediately, no. And if we stay at 3-2, likely not. To be in auto aid, without speaking for RGO, they likely want 4-2 staffing.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Good evening, council. Gary Hood, 465 North Baldwin. And I would like to comment on the three-person engine company versus a four-person engine company. I think the terminology used was minimum acceptable with three personnel on the engine company. In describing the functions of an engine company when they arrive on the scene, you have the captain, the engineer, and a firefighter. The captain's job is to direct incoming personnel, oversee the situation at hand, and direct his crew on what functions to do. The engineer, his responsibility would be to place the engine in a safe position for firefighting personnel to function safely, and to assist firefighters in getting the equipment off of the engine and into position, like the jaws of life. And if you're using the jaws of life, it really takes two personnel. So if you have the captain overseeing the whole operation, handling the radio communications, the engineer bringing in the equipment and overseeing, assisting when he can, you end up with one firefighter. you end up with one firefighter trying to perform the job. If you've ever seen the jaws of life and some of the other equipment, it's pretty heavy. If you have a semi-serious traffic accident, you really need two people working the jaws of life. If you're going to cut the door off, you're going to have to have someone pulling on the door and the other person with the jaws of life cutting the door. At the same time, you need to comfort and make it safe for the occupants of the engine, of the automobile. House fire, same thing goes on, except for you're not going to be able to do an interior attack or search and rescue with one firefighter. You do have other mutual aid coming in. But if your house is on fire, and there's, it's two in the morning, and there's a delay of personnel to arrive on the scene, you can't do an interior search and rescue with one firefighter. You really can't even do it with the NFPA saying that you can only go two personnel in if you have two personnel outside suited up, ready to go. I know that the number of fires last year was, I think, eleven fires. So it's a small number, so we've been lucky so far. But if you're really not wanting to provide minimum acceptable, you really need to have two firefighters on the engine company. You don't necessarily have to have a paramedic. You could have an EMT for your basic life support on the engine company. You do have paramedics rolling in, so you'll have advanced life support shortly. Your basic life support firefighters can provide CPR and maintain the victim until paramedics arrive on the scene to give the appropriate medications. So in your consideration, please consider four-person on the engine company. And if you want more details, I can give you more details on why two firefighters are necessary.
Thank you.
Have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hood.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for the education, too.
Hello, city council, city managers, and Sierra Madre. I'm Christine Lowe. I live at three seven seven West Sierra Madre Boulevard. And I want to make this a little bit understandable for the general public and for you guys, since it is, we're using a lot of lingo that you might not quite understand. So I'm trying to make this feasible for everybody. My computer just shut down, so let me put down my notes that I saved in the phone. Okay, first of all, NFPA, in terms of fire protection, is pretty much like the building codes you have for building in the city. NFPA stands for the National Fire Protection Association, and there's a few codes that are actually relevant to what we're discussing now. When we say that there are minimum requirements, these are our codes for our minimum requirements for safety. There's tons of statistics, and we can share that with all of you, on different studies and different areas in suburban United States across our nation that say what happened if you dropped down to a three-man engine. So if you do the three-two personnel. Now, in May of two thousand and eleven, when we went to paid captains, we, the main proposal to the city council and why we had it approved was with the assumption and the proposition that this would now bring us up to having automatic aid with the area C cities and Verdugo. That didn't happen. We still are not, we don't have automatic aid. We would love to have, obviously, automatic aid, because if you, especially if you had a three-two engine, then you are not qualified to even have a first-response engine that's up to NFPA standards. So even if we go to, it's a good temporary fix right now, I absolutely agree. What we have right now is absolutely unreliable and not safe for our citizens, not safe for me as a citizen, not safe for our firefighters or our personnel. So I was wondering, then, is there a plan, a timeline plan, for when these new steps would be taken? Because I wouldn't want to see what we had happen in two thousand and eleven, where we're hoping for automatic aid, but we have no idea if that is going to follow through or not. So have, we talked to area C chiefs. That's who the main, the main group you would need to discuss with, how we would get to be part of automatic aid. So the two thousand and seven edition of NFPA, and I can share this with you if you ever wanted it, quote-unquote, "In the initial stages of an incident, where only one crew is operating in the hazardous area at a working structure fire, a minimum of four individuals shall be required, consisting of two individuals working as a crew in the hazardous area and two individuals present outside this hazard area, available for assistance or rescue at emergency operations where entry into the danger area is required." Again, we don't have that many fires. It's maybe twenty-five percent of your calls. So in regards to emergency medicine, NFPA standard four fifty, guide for emergency medicine services and systems. Most experts agree that four responders, at least two trained in advanced cardiac life support, which are our paramedics, and two trained in basic life support, which would be your EMT firefighters if you didn't have paramedic firefighters, are the minimum required to provide ACLS to cardiac arrest victims. As a side note, a medical call requires just as many personnel, as if not more, than a fire call. If it can be meet, if we can meet the medical needs, we can't, why can't we meet the fire needs? In order, when someone calls nine-one-one and it's a cardiac event, you have someone on a defibrillator, you have someone on an EKG, you have someone doing a line for meds, you have someone performing CPR if necessary, you have someone who needs to drive the ambulance, and someone who's in the engine. So you would have to make your engine company come off of the engine, therefore, you don't have a rolling engine while they're working on a medical call.
I'm going to ask if you can wrap it up. I know there are others that want to speak, but I would be interested in getting that information if you'd like to forward it.
Okay, and just in final, I really appreciate the fact that we've come from our last meeting. I think it is more important, though, to fully invest in what we're calling about, what we're talking about here. We're not just talking about the fact that we need to have this funded. Of course, we're going to have to figure out how to fund it, but these are standards that we need. If you have a three-man engine, and the statistics show you drop down to a thirty-two percent effective rate if you had a three-two policy. So as soon as that can become up to a four-two or automatic aid, then you're looking at sufficient services in public safety for me as a resident, for all of us as residents, and for even you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. City Manager, do you want to address the question about who, the other chiefs that we've spoken to? Because I know we've done quite a bit of discussions.
We've talked with a lot of chiefs. I've spent the last several weeks talking to chiefs, current chiefs, past chiefs, firefighters, current firefighters. The comments that we're hearing tonight are, they're correct. Right, so what we're trying to remind the community of when we talk about auto aid, auto aid, you don't get auto aid if you put four people on an engine. You don't get auto aid if you put fourteen people on an engine. You have to have the correct training and standards and special, operating procedures in place. Our goal tonight is to get people on the engine. Next step is to train all of our fire personnel appropriately to the same standards that we have in the Verdugo system. After that, we will then work with our neighbors to determine what is the right next step. Is it a fourth person on the engine? Is it changing how we do the ambulance? We're committed to taking their feedback. So tonight's the first step in what is a transition. And with respect to the speakers, when we talk about two-in, two-out, the standards, right now, I try and remind people, we often just have two. There's no two-in, there's no two-out, we just have two. Tonight's the first step, moving towards a career department. We're going to have to invest more in the future than we're investing tonight. Tonight, though, is not about what it's going to look like in two thousand and twenty, it's what it's going to look like tomorrow.
Thank you for that. Okay, Ms. Lee, we have three minutes.
Barbara Lee, Sierra Madre. As a layman, I'm going to say I like this, what's being presented tonight. I was saddened when we lost our volunteer fire department. Fantastic. Okay, times change. When automatic aid is being talked about, I'm wondering, what's the time study on that as the arrival for automatic aid? Because everyone that's in the medical field knows you have a three-to-six-minute window. That's it. I won't go into detail. Last time I did, everybody said, oh, my God, ah. Okay, I can speak from experience. My boyfriend died in two thousand and eleven because of lack of cell phone towers in this town. He was two blocks from the fire department. All didn't go through. So I don't know what automatic aid would have, not been too helpful there either. I'm trained in CPR. I've saved a couple people, one I worked on for thirteen minutes. CPR does work. I'd like to see the defibrillators in each and every patrol car. That will help aid in Sierra Madre. I'd like to see the CERT group expanded. I know it's advertised, but, you know, after seeing what happened in Las Vegas, I think we really need to let the public know, we really need to get out there and get involved with CERT. Because if there is something that happens, my next couple of questions are, would this fire department like this? Will we keep these guys here in case of an emergency, or will they be called off someplace else? My other only question is, is when they're dropping off down at the hospital, if they're a fire medic, will they be stuck down there in the bay waiting for a bed to open up? Or will they be available to come back up to town so that we're not left stranded without having aid? But the way this is presented, I like this. I didn't really like it when we had all that automatic aid going on. I'd hear the sirens racing down the street with the paramedics coming down the street, you know. We've had the same amount of fires, the same amount of emergencies in this town, and believe me, I've been born and raised here, and nothing has really changed. There's a huge fire, we all grab our shovels and go up to the hill. So, I mean, Sierra Madre is a pretty cool town. But we have to look at what we can afford. We've got the library, we've got the fire department, we've got the police department. All these things are boom, boom, boom. I like what you just did with the debt issuance. I didn't realize that hadn't been done before. Great. So anyway, this four-man on, four-man off, I think this works. Give it some time. We're not going to be left high and dry. The other surrounding cities seem to jump in when we need it. If they had paramedics down at the Orange Grove office, I'd say, let's go to the paramedics down at the Arcadia, Orange Grove office, fire department. But they don't. The bay's too small to have paramedics. So those are my questions. The fire paramedics, do they stay in town when they have a drop-off at the hospital? Do they get to come back, or do we lose them down there to just wait around, wait around, wait around? Otherwise, I think this is a kind of a win-win. And if some sort of a contract can be signed that if we're going to be training the fire personnel, that they will remain in town for a certain length of time, you know, not to jump ship, like when we've trained some of the city manager, not city manager, well, yeah, city managers and a few other accountants and things that they get their school degrees, and they just leave for other places. So, yeah.
So, Ms. Lee, I'm not sure which questions we can answer today. I know we may note them.
Only that one about the fire paramedics, if they drop off at the hospital. I don't know if one of the men here can answer that. And that would be my only real question is, are we still being protected then as a city?
Okay.
Now, I'm going to get off my soapbox.
Mayor, I want to address the automatic aid versus mutual aid. And we'll get Barbara Lee her answer for offline. Right now, we have mutual aid. I understand we set a goal of automatic aid in two thousand and eleven. I would say we're further from reaching that goal today than we were in two thousand and eleven. We're likely closer to have the conversation of, do we qualify for mutual aid still? As opposed to, are we moving towards automatic aid? So automatic aid is a great, fantastic aspirational goal.
What is automatic aid?
Automatic aid means when, it's borderless fire response. So engines respond based on proximity, and you also get a larger response. So a first-engine-type response. Mutual aid means if we need people to come, other agencies to come, we go to the fire, and then we call them. Or if we have forehand knowledge, we call them, and then they come. So it is not as safe. It does reduce response times, particularly when we see structured fires. So I want the community to understand where we're at right now. We have mutual aid, and that's, that's good. We're the only fire agency in Verdugo that does not have automatic aid. And we are further from having automatic aid today than we were in two thousand and eleven when we set the goal to have automatic aid. So I agree, automatic aid is a good goal to have today. The goal should be preservation of mutual aid, train our personnel, get them on board, and then work with our partners to determine what the next step is.
Thank you for answering that. And for clarification and the differentiation between the mutual and auto. Do we have any other persons that would like to comment on this item? And again, if you can state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
John Olds, two thirty-one West Grandview. Retired LA County Fire Captain, also retired from the volunteer fire department here in Sierra Madre. I'm going to start with a question. Will we have a fire chief? I think we're headed in the right direction here, but I would like to echo Chris and Gary Hood in supporting the four personnel on the fire engine. Think about the staffing issues you would have with a three-man engine. If you have an injured firefighter, now you're down to two people. Now you've got two other firefighters you can draw from that are home. What if you can't get ahold of them? Are you out of service? Can you still provide auto aid? What happens if a firefighter gets injured? And you have four, you can go down to three. You have a man on vacation. You have a guy go home sick. You've got to call somebody. There's all kinds of issues with staffing with just three. Please consider a four-man engine to prevent the staffing nightmare you could possibly have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Richard Awishi. I live at three oh five East Allegria Avenue. I wasn't actually planning on speaking tonight, but I can answer some of the questions that some of the people have had. One of the things I will address is the automatic aid. Automatic aid is definitely important, as, as we're hearing from a lot of the past firefighters. The problem with not having automatic aid and having the three-two staffing is the two paramedics are going to be single-function paramedics. They're not going to have academies, they're not going to be trained. So when the engine arrives, and hopefully, they do have academies, but they're not going to be paid as firefighters. So when the, when the engine arrives on scene to a working structure fire, we're relying on a mutual aid. And I don't know if our mutual aid agreements are going to stay the same as what they are now. I'm sure, I'm sure there's a plan, and I'm sure the city manager has addressed that. But if we have a delay in an engine coming, we won't have two-in, two-out. Without two-in, two-out, you can't start effective interior firefighting. You can't even start real firefighting. It's hard with the three-oh staffing. It's hard enough to pull the hose, do the size up, you know, order your resources, especially if you're ordering through mutual aid and there's a delay. Another thing is with the paramedics. Yes, your paramedics will be holding a wall at the hospital. If it's a BLS call and they don't meet the triage criteria, they're going to be down there. And we're going to be relying on a city like Arcadia, which we rely on a lot, to come up with their paramedic service. Another question, or another statement that was said, is there's no paramedic at the station on Orange Grove. Station one oh seven is an assessment engine. They do have a paramedic there, just like the station on Huntington and Baldwin. It's an assessment engine. So they're getting, Arcadia has first ALS on scene on all of their calls because of the extra paramedic. Now, if we're going to have a firefighter, paramedic on our engine, we will get first ALS on scene, and that is a good thing. This model is a step in the right direction. But if we can't get the automatic aid agreements, and it's not within the near future, it's just a Band-Aid on, on, on the problem. I do like the direction. It's much better than the last proposal that was put together. Having an engineer on the rig is a critical function. It's so critical that for two-in, two-out, you have to have another function that isn't doing a critical function to count for two-in, two-out. It's hard, I can elaborate later if one of you guys want to know what that really means. But it's a step in the right direction. But without auto aid, it is a Band-Aid. And I can answer any questions you guys want. I am a paramedic coordinator, and I am a current firefighter. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back for discussion with the council.
I can go. First, thank you very much to all of our experts out there that, again, provided so much information. And I, you can't disagree with any of it. I think that what, the way I view this is that we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good right now. You know, right now- You know, right now, this proposal is, is definitely an improvement, and I think it's a step that we need to take. And I think that the perfect solution would be what we heard from a number of folks here that know this area a lot better than I do, to have a 4-2. And I think that hopefully we work there to getting that type of setup very shortly, or at least as quickly as we can. But I think in the interim, this is an improvement. It's an incremental improvement, and it makes us a safer community. So, you know, I'm, I'm voting to approve it with the knowledge that, yeah, it's an interim, it's an interim step, and I think we have the personnel in, in place right now and the leadership here in the city to where I'm confident we're going to come up with some real sustainable long-term solutions that reflect a model that, in terms of fire services and paramedic services going forward, that, that will hopefully be, you know, a model city. But I think in the near term, this is, this is something we have to do. And if we had a blank check and we had all the resources in the world, I think there's no one up here that would vote against a 4-2. I think we would go to, you know, try to hire as many people as possible and go to a 4-2, but I think balancing the economic realities with where we are now, I think this is the right step. So, I'm voting to approve it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just echo Councilmember Harabedian's comments. I don't view this as a roadmap for our future fire department. This is where we're literally just putting out the fire that we have, okay? So, we need to be safer than we are today, and I look forward to a lot more discussion going forward. I personally believe that we need to get to automatic aid, too, but I appreciate all the time and effort the city manager has put in just getting us to this point, and he, I think he's approaching it in the right way, working with our community, our, within the San Gabriel Valley, within the Verdugo fire departments, and working with them so that we can ultimately achieve automatic aid. So, Mr. City Manager, I mean, there'll be ongoing discussions about this, obviously. I mean, what, after you, we approve this and put this in place, what do you see happening?
So, the, the next step likely will be to determine leadership of the department. We have several different options, including traditional, go to, go to the street and hire a chief. We could hire retired chief from outside, from LA County, LA City, who could then do an assessment and make recommendations on staffing in the ambulance and fleet. We could also look to do, I believe South Pasadena entered into a shared leadership model. So, again, the, the goal today, get people on the engine, train them, make them safe. Next step is determine leadership, that leadership in conjunction with Verdugo chiefs, who's going to make recommendations on what's next. Is it the engine? Is it the ambulance? Is it both?
Okay. Thank you for your patience, too. I know you've explained that several times, but, but I'm, I'm good with that plan.
Anyone else want to comment?
Obviously, the, this is public safety. It's our top priority. It's our top job here, the city and the council, so we have to get better coverage than we have now. And we, so we have to take some action tonight, and I think this is the best way to do that. I think echoing the comments I've heard before, it, it is, we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We make some progress tonight, and we come back and reassess, always with the idea of trying to get our department to a point where we can, the other departments will want to provide us automatic aid. Right now, they don't want to do it, because when they send their units in here, they're not sure we're going to be able to support them. So, we, we have to make sure that we have all our i's dotted and all our t's crossed so we can sell ourselves to the member agencies and get automatic aid, and that's going to be a time-consuming process. But I think our city manager and our staff has got us going in the right direction. So, I'm going to vote for this.
Thanks. I, I totally agree. And yes, just like everybody said, we would really like to do that 4-2. We understand that that's the recommendation, but our 3-2 is, is the first step. Getting everybody trained, I think, is also the next important that, that seems to not have been in the forefront tonight, but adequate training for our personnel will make us more attractive to our surrounding areas, getting our leadership in place, and then going forward on what we need to do to get automatic aid. I think this is a step forward and certainly something that's been needed for a while, and I just want to thank the city manager and the staff for coming up with this recommendation for us.
I don't think I disagree with what I've heard from the public, from what I've heard from my colleagues. I, I think, I know for me, it's been, definitely been a learning experience. If there's any positive that's come out in these last couple of months, it really has been learning about what staffing should like, look like, what we need to strive for, and knowing that we really need to keep our city safe. I mean, at the end of the day, that's really what we need to do. And I, I hope that all of you have heard, if we haven't said enough, that this is phase one. This is phase one. This is the step in the right direction. This is not the end-all, be-all. I think it was extremely shocking to learn that we're the only Verdugo agency that does not have automatic aid, and that should be alerting to us, and it, it should create a, something that we are, again, going to strive for. So, given that this is the step in the right direction, and we are looking forward to hearing feedback as to what that phase two will look like, I don't think that there's any question that I'll be supporting this either.
Hey, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 1752.
Second.
Reorganizing the fire department and amending the compensation and salary matrix.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries with unanimous vote. So, thank you to everyone that came out today. I know this was the last time on the agenda. Maybe we did that strategically so we'd have an audience, but again, we really appreciate it, and your input, feedback, comment is extremely valuable. So, please, for those of you that want to continue sending information, because this is an ongoing conversation, please do. I know that I'm interested in it, Kristen, so send that over, and I'm sure the rest of my city council members would be interested in that also. So, thank you. Okay, do we have any other action item, or new items that we'd like to put forward?
I'll move for German if not.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Your head.
Pass on him.